And they did make the changes we asked for.
Perfect.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Otero County Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time and have a roll call. Here?
Here.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Do we have anybody on the sign up sheet to speak?
Actually, I just wanted to go through or just show you that I have updated information, those, those, all the documents in front of you. This is the updated estimated ending cash balance at the end of fiscal year 2023. I've also updated the community services request form, and that is something that I will need for you to let me know if you're going to cut anything, or if anything's going to change so that I can make sure that is included next week when you approve the resolution for the interim budget. And then there's also updated capital outlay, and then the updated salary and benefits with the vacancies and new hires. And these are all updated from the information from the meeting that we had in March, as well as from the community services meeting that we had on Tuesday. So I have updated it from the requests that were made and the changes that were made. We do have two departments. We have the rifle range and the road department that would like to present some additional information to you for consideration. So I don't know if you wanted to look through like the community services first and let me know if there's any changes to that, and then we can hear from the departments.
I still feel personally, we need the two quotes, Eric breakdown, and then the one from Tueroza, the Villa de Tueroza Senior Housing.
So we'll just hold on to those until, I mean, even if we get them in July, I can still get them included on the final budget. But I did speak with Mr. Marinco after the meeting, and he had already gone out and called several different roofing companies. So he's trying to get some quotes, but he wouldn't have them by today, obviously. So he should be getting those to us fairly quickly. If he has them by next Thursday's meeting, I'll make sure to, maybe he can come and present them, or I can at least give you the quotes. He can forward them to me, and I can give them to you, so you can take a look at them.
And we should have a rough idea.
You'd have to be scheduled.
Unscheduled.
Unscheduled, okay.
We kind of have a rough idea of the money that we're going to be allocating to those areas.
Yeah, that would be good, so.
So.
Those are the only issues I had with the special request, just those two quotes.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, great. So then I'll just hold off on those two until we get the updated quotes from them.
Okay.
And just looking at the estimate, estimated schedule of unrestricted cash, I just want you to know, this is exactly where we usually are at this time of the year. This takes into account all the revenue and expenses through the end of April. And so you can see, the general fund is usually the one everyone wants to know where it's not going to end up. We're predicting about $5.6 million in cash at the end of fiscal year '23, but that also takes into account that we have to have three months' worth of reserves, which is that $4,014,874. So that we have to hold in reserve, according to state statute. And the only other fund that has to hold a reserve is the road shop. The road fund has to have three months of budgeted expenses held as a reserve in case there's a disaster and they need the funding for fixing roads or whatever. So those are the only two funds that have a restricted portion to their cash. But we're, even though costs are going up, some of our gross receipts tax, of course, is also going up. And so we're remaining fairly steady with our revenues and expenditures as far as the cash balances due to that. So we're holding steady. We're doing pretty well right now.
Good.
And by the way, this does include everything, all of the requests, all of the salaries and benefits, capital outlay, everything is included in these cash numbers. Just wanted to make you aware of that. And just let me know, do you have any questions on, on any of these? I know you haven't had much of a chance to look through them yet. I literally just finished all of it like last night around five o'clock, so.
So I was thinking that we were going to work in, in a $42 million to $43 million budget range this year. Of course, that's not counting the, the money we have to hold, the, what, the four million. And then I didn't take into consideration his money that he had to have also.
For?
So are we, because I thought we had an estimated about 42 million. Was that 42 million on the, on just the departments, or was that?
So I guess I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. So if you look at the second page, I'm predicting approximately 57 million in unrestricted cash at the end of next year.
Right.
So this includes all departments. And so.
This is our total budget number?
That's our total budget, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, it's gone up from last year. What was the, what was the budget, what was it last year?
I should have brought that. I didn't bring that budget book down with me.
It was around that number, Gerald. I think it was around 42 million.
I think you're correct. It was a little bit less, so. And of course, you know, the fact that we have the American Rescue Plan revenue in there, as well as what's really bumped it up.
I don't think I have any more questions about it. Do you? Do we want to talk about the salaries?
Yeah.
You want to move on to the salaries, or do we want to let them do their presentation?
Yeah, just a quick comment, though, on what we were speaking about is we need to handle this budget, though, Gerald, just like you said, about a $42 million budget, because I pray that we don't have the recovery stuff later, too. You know what I'm saying? I mean, yeah. So our actual budget would be more down around 40.
Probably. Yeah, because, you know, we never, ever spend everything that is budgeted.
Sure.
But we potentially could, which is why, you know, I need to make sure that it's balanced. And it is, it is.
I do have a few, three questions. You can probably answer me real quick. I already answered one of them by looking through this other we hadn't got to yet. Let's go ahead, let's, let's do that, and then we can answer them as we go through, because it'll be in this one here. My, my questions were on, on buildings and grounds. We made sure that we pulled the building out and put it all into Tom's deal, so it's all under that deal. And then my other question was Eric was getting a raise, and none of his other people were getting a raise. Why?
So Eric, as far as his department is concerned?
Yes.
He was able to, they had some budget this year for some vacancies that they had. And so he was able to move some of the, the budget around to give most, I think, all of his employees received an increase this year from the budget that we already have, had, excuse me, from vacancies that were not filled. So for next year, because all of his people have just gotten an increase, he's the only one, he's not received an increase, so.
He's got a note, excuse me, he's got a note in here. "The remainder of the funds was used to give building and grounds employees increases and help balance pay the scale within his department." That's the other money that he had from when he took the electrician part out to his, but, so they did get?
Yes, they did.
Okay. That, that's the number one question. And then my other one, actually, I answered it earlier. The only other one that Vicky and I are both was concerned with, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Griffin is aware of it, but the, on the assessors. Where did that go? On, on the assessors pay increases?
Yes.
Steve was all across the board on that.
Right.
I personally would take it back to make the even seven like we give everybody else.
We can do that.
That's just my opinion.
That's not a problem. I can definitely do that for the interim budget. Yep.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because he had a map.
And that was one thing that he mentioned that was an alternative thing he was thinking of. If, if you did not approve the ones that were all over the place, the alternate would be, of course, like a 7% increase across the board, which is what most of the other departments are receiving. So I'll make sure to do that.
And that's really about all the questions. Those two answered that. You brought me the new quote for the deck. That was my question on that.
Yes, sir.
So there is, there's a little bit of dollar discrepancy between what the quote you brought and what's in the paperwork part.
Wasn't much.
Where are we having it? Is it in a book, or?
It's gonna be in, well, they brought this right here.
Yeah.
Which is the new quote for the deck, and then.
The submit here. The only difference, what, on the front, where it says, "Deck's total price is $5,565.47." And on the very back, in the actual quote?
Yeah.
It says $5,631.97, which is, was only like $60, $66 difference after I figured it out, so it's not much.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Ward Kenyon. I'm president of Fowler, the support group for the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range, and helping them come up with some figures for their materials to replace the deck.
I'm sorry, if I can slow you down. Now, what was your, what were your?
Friends of the Law Lose Range, or Fowler.
So are you, are y'all, do y'all have a board then?
We do.
Okay. And so how does this board serve the shooting? Is this the, is the shooting range the only board that you serve? Or the only organization that you serve?
Our, our foundation serves only the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range, nothing else. None of the board members or members receive any funds from this as in salary. Their incentive is to help the community, help the range, help the county.
How, how, how long ago were y'all formed?
In 2019.
Okay.
December is when the IRS recognized us as having the, the right information and documents to be a 501(c)(3) foundation. And then, of course, we submitted through the state secretary of state's office, as well as registering with the attorney general's office.
Okay.
And we have all those documents anybody wants to see, plus they're available online also, if you ever do a search of them, Friends of Law Lose Range. The point we wanted to make is that we were doing this to help. We didn't in any way want to cause any hiccups or delays for anything that they need.
Sure.
People ask the question, what's in it for us?
Yeah.
What's in it for us is the update of the range.
Sure.
We're involved, and most, if not every single one of us that are in the organization uses the range regularly.
Okay. But I just wanted, just a few more questions about your organization. Do you have monthly meetings?
We do.
Okay.
Once a month, the second Wednesday of every month. At 6:15, we meet out at the range in the classroom.
Do you, do you follow the Robert's Rules of Order? Do you keep notes?
We do. We keep minutes. We have Robert's Rules. We have banking. We have to report our 990 requirements to the IRS and to the state as far as being a nonprofit foundation.
And you, do you, on your agenda, whenever you guys have your monthly meetings, do you discuss the issues that are going on out at the gun range? What needs to be repaired? What focus needs to be?
We're given a, we're given a project list that our organization reviews, and we discuss it and determine whether it's something that is within our purview financially, or is it something we can do in kind as far as physical.
Okay. And then through that board and those decisions that are made, is that where you come up with your requests to the commission board on what you want funding for?
We, and please, remember, we're not asking the commission for anything.
No, I know. I'm just asking you what the meetings are about.
Our meetings.
And you have official Robert's Rules of Order. You have meetings that are recorded, minutes that are recorded. These are, this is something that I've never heard anything about. I don't know about my fellow commissioners. But no, let me, let me, let me finish if I will.
Sure.
So I'm just trying to find out more about how your board operates and the decisions that are made. So on the funding request, whenever you guys, whenever y'all come and, and Mark makes his, his, puts his packet together, and those requests are put together, is this something that your board looks at and discusses during board meetings?
The things, the things that he brings to you are specifically between him and you. I'm here to support some, to help with some legwork, to help them get a design for their replacement of their deck itself.
I know.
And this, this software that we use to help him.
Yes, sir.
Was obviously through Home Depot.
Yeah.
We tried to use Lowe's.
Yeah.
And they allowed us to use it until it came down to get a list of materials. And at that time, they wanted us to pay for the use of the program.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just a little bit, but, but I'm just a little bit baffled by that you guys have your own board that's organized out there through a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. You're having monthly board meetings to discuss the issues that are going on at the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range, and it's a county-funded and a county-supported range. And I never, I didn't even have an idea that you guys even existed. I don't know about.
We made a presentation last month.
Did you? Okay.
At the county commission meeting.
Well, I'm sorry.
Introducing ourselves.
But I think that, I think that what you're doing is a good job. I mean, I, I commend you on it. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to come against it. I think it's great to have men like yourself and others like you, I'm sure, that are very qualified and very, you know, to, to help in the management of the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range. And I would like to see it more focused on more of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit approach, you know? I mean, I wish that y'all could take, maybe, maybe we could work something over with you guys to take management of it, and then the county could fund y'all like we do other departments. I don't know. Might be something that we could do. And then y'all would manage that money inside of your organization. We just fund it, and then you allocate it, instead of y'all coming up with where we want to allocate, where we need the money, and then come at us. We could entrust you with that money, and then you could take care of it through maybe your board meetings and stuff. I don't know. I mean.
We patterned, patterned ourselves similar, I won't say exactly, but similar to the Afons, the one we go to Friends of the Zoo.
Okay.
And to where we were just a standalone nonprofit, we, Fowler, would receive donations to help with things that the range had not gotten funded for. And so we're over and above that. We didn't want to interfere with any of the funds or budget that comes down through you, through the commission. And we handle the small stuff. We handle the things that, like a tow bar, to move the vehicles around for law enforcement.
Well, y'all know.
Something that's not in their budget.
But you, but you know, you guys know where the, more know where the needs are than us, you know? I mean, we have these budget hearings, and y'all come in and say, well, you need a tow bar. And then we're sitting up here going, what in the world would they need a tow bar for?
It would arrange, need a tow bar.
But, but you know, though, you know more that you, you have more hands-on and more oversight. And so I would just think it could be possibly so, an idea that we could entertain, where maybe we could just entrust y'all, since y'all already have a board set up and you're already legally organized, maybe we could just fund, fund your board, and then y'all could take care of, you know, the money that we give, instead of us saying what you need specifically. I don't know. It's just an idea.
Well, our organization is, again, to do nothing but support the range.
Sure.
Is, is that, could that be part of our purview? I think it's an area that would be behooves to look into and then further discuss and meet about.
Sure.
To see and try to identify the areas that maybe we don't have the authority as a nonprofit foundation, that we can't take it all, or we could assist. But ultimately, we're not here to interfere with anything anybody else is doing.
Sure.
I don't want that to ever come across with anyone.
And I'm sorry if I, if it sounded like that, I was communicating. It was kind of, it kind of, I'm sorry I haven't been more engaged.
That's the question I expected at our commission meeting when we presented our formal presentation.
I probably didn't think about it at that time.
There was a lot going on that.
Yes, sir. Yeah. But, but, but it is something that I would love to, to, to maybe entertain further with y'all, as far as just supporting you as a nonprofit out there, and then letting y'all take care of your own budget again, because, you know, where, where I sit as a commissioner, I have Mark come in and give us a big extensive, you know how much the budget's gone up out at the shooting range?
Sure.
You know, it's, it's gone up by 200 or 300%, I think, since we first, since I first came in to sit here. But Mark, Mark's trying to do, Mark's trying to do his best out there, and he's trying to provide everything that's needed, and we understand that. But when Mark comes in with specific requests for like a skid steer and stuff, I, I feel like it's just Mark that's asking. I don't feel like it's coming, I didn't know it was coming from more of a board-directed decision, you know? And so, yeah, I, I would be, I would be more under the precept.
I don't think you're actually involved in that, are you? Isn't that Mark's request through the shooting range?
It is.
They're more like a booster club.
That's all we do. We look, that's it.
Helping for grants, et cetera.
I got you.
If they, if he says something that comes up, like a skid steer, oh, yeah, great. Boy, wouldn't it be nice to be able to just write a check, and there you go, have it.
We would love to do it for you.
But we also look at the same thing, that some of his requests may not be within our purview, but if it's, again, a new foundation starting out, you take baby steps.
Sure.
You don't, you don't come in and try to, you know, hold cow one bite. But ultimately, and I, I hope everybody understands, we're here to just help.
Sure.
We're providing information. And so coming back.
Yes, sir.
To this part here, my engineering background and business and finance background thought I could help a little bit.
Sure.
And help them get some information.
Absolutely.
At the previous budget here, our meeting, it came down to, we don't even know what materials would cost. And so we did a rough estimate. We, we designed what the deck would look like to replace.
Okay.
And then, thank goodness, this manufacturer, this company had a design program to allow us to use, or I'd be still sitting at my draft board, trying, our drafting table, trying to get this drawn out. And then they also provide a list of materials, which even comes down to helps with the spacing of the materials. And this was designed just for quick information, let you know to get replacement materials. Did we have time to get three quotes? We're still waiting for Brand X to give us.
Boy, this is a good, though, where it breaks out all the, all your materials and exactly what you need, and it's the whole design, huh?
And I'm thinking that it is. It is the whole design.
Yeah.
The only thing it doesn't give us is step A, step B, which one you do first, second, third. But I think the difference between what the program estimate was and what they quoted as far as the attachment is the steps themselves. They're going to have to be a special order, and with special orders, you don't know what the price is. So that's where they gave it to us at the time. And they are understanding, understanding that this is just for budgetary purposes only, that this is not a commitment on their side, that we still have procurement guidelines to go through.
Right.
But now, the next step, if it's something that Fowler had budgeted, and we would accept the project to do, which it is on our project list, we were in these baby steps also. We needed this information before we could say, let's do a commitment. Let's just throw the material at Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range and have maintenance build the deck. We don't have that authority to say what another agency should be doing. Do we have enough in-kind laborers that could do it? It would be close, but it could be drawn out. And none of us want that, because as long as the deck's not there, the classroom's not being used.
Sure.
Hopefully, I'm, I'm clear.
Is this weather shield? Is that that step that looks like wood, but it's not, and it lasts a lot longer?
No.
No?
This is, unfortunately, this is, this, this is the part that makes me cringe, and I don't want to step in on Bill's information. But I wanted to go with something that's going to last maybe 20, 30 years, material. And since there's a hard supply problem, it was hard for them to give us an estimate for that. Off the top of my head, and doing these things before, it's almost three times this amount.
Wow.
The cost for those materials, plus the hardware to secure it. It's not just the same, you know, wood screw to screw it, to attach it. There's special clips now and those type of things. We wanted to give all the information we possibly could. It's just unfortunate, some of these things just take time, because you're limited on what the vendor's going to help you provide.
Bill Wise from the rifle range. As a reminder, this, the materials that are in this estimate are the cheapest. This, this isn't like a, we're going to go high-end, which we like to do, to last as long as we can. But ultimately, this is a safety request, because we did have an employee, 220 something pounds and past, step on one of the boards and went through it. Fortunately, he did not get hurt. But again, this is not just an upgrade to the facility. This is a safety-related, so people don't get injured, because it's beyond serviceable right now.
Okay.
And if, if this deck's something that's, you're, you know, you see long range down the road, I mean, I, if you can get materials that are going to last, I don't feel like you have to come in here and just get the cheapest stuff, because that's the only thing you're going to get by us. I mean, we want to make the wisest decision as well, and we don't want to be replacing it a few years down the line. So, I mean, take that into consideration, too. I mean, don't, don't feel like you got to come in here and just ask for the, you know?
And that may be a little bit of my fault, because retired from the public schools, former director of business and finance for them, as well as an operations administrator for the entire district. That was the purview we were given. You bring it to us leased, and then if we see we can afford a little bit more, we'll try to juice it, then build it up a little bit.
And that's a good approach.
But that's, but that, that may be my influence, and I apologize.
No, no.
It's gone the wrong direction.
I'm fine with it.
All right.
Yeah, we appreciate, appreciate your efforts out there, too, really. I mean, we, you know, we always want to be looking at maybe better partnerships and more feasible ways and lead, better ways to do things. And, you know, if, if that could be something that we could entertain moving forward, as far as just supporting you guys in kind of independently as an organization, and then letting you fund yourself inside of the money that we fund you with, instead of us sitting up here going, oh, yeah, well, we'll give you some targets, but we won't give you the tow bar. And who are we to, you know, we, we don't really know what the real needs are.
We didn't ever want to come, come across that if we're here, we're offering you something, and, oh, no, we didn't want your help. I didn't ever want you to be of light of any way. So if we could, we could help and we can help. We're, we're happy to do, we're proud to do.
Yeah.
One last thing, our organization is open to anyone to come in and meet. We have dues paying members and we also have non dues paying members. We give everybody the same information.
Yeah.
The biggest difference is dues paying members have voting.
Yeah.
That, that's it, so we invite anyone.
Sure.
We invite you to come out and our next meeting is next Wednesday at 6:15.
Okay. Well, I might make a request too, and I don't know what y'all, if you guys are or not, but you need to get the county of, uh, record of your minutes from your meetings too, you know? So we can know what's going on through your meetings out there and kind of what's being discussed, so. We'd appreciate that.
All right, perfect. Thank you for.
All right, thank you.
Julianne, I got one question on the, it's from Robin.
Yes.
On your page here, you have no quote. Is this quote from ESA, is that the quote that you're talking, no quote? It's for the video cameras?
So I know that there was, at the last minute, she did give us the quote on the surveillance upgrade at the voting warehouse for $7,339, is that what that one is?
Yes.
Okay, there's also, they had requested video surveillance for the annex. And she was the one that requested it, but we still have not received the quote as far as I know from the same company that put in the, the video surveillance here at the admin building. And it was put under Robin's department, but I think once we get the quote, it would probably be split amongst all the departments that are in the annex. But as far as I know, we have not received that from them yet. So it was a request, but we, we don't have a dollar amount. And the same with the treasurer's office. They are going to need to upgrade their credit card terminals, but at this time, they, they don't have a quote for me. Potentially, they might have something for the final budget, but I just wanted you to know. Those, those are two items that are still out there that were requested that we still have not received quotes on.
Okay.
And those shouldn't be huge. Okay, are we ready for Tom?
Good morning, commissioners.
Lord and Tom.
So which one would you like to discuss first?
It's up to you.
Okay, so the part-time mechanic, as you all know, I had one retire last month. I had one leave us the month before. And I've got another mechanic fixing to retire at the end of this month. We have replaced one of the two that have left. The mechanic that is retiring at the end of the month is wanting to come in on a part-time basis. And with para, he can work 19 hours a week. We've got one project that he and I've been working on for the last year and he'd like to finish that one up. And he can come in 19 hours and not mess up his para basically. And it would help us until we can fill one or two of the other spaces.
I've got no problem with that. And he's already trained, he's already up and running and knows what he's doing.
He'll, he'll still have to apply, you know, because we're creating a position, he'll still have to apply and go through all that. But, you know, this is what he and I came up with, basically.
Is this the, the survey mapping?
No, this is the temporary, the part-time mechanic.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So he's gonna go from full-time to part-time, but he has to reapply?
He'll have to reapply, correct.
Yeah, no, I have no problem with it, Tom, that works for you guys and best way to do it.
It'll keep us out of a little bit of a bind for right now.
And with the part-time positions, there are no benefits. They can request para, but obviously in, in this case, this individual, if he got that position, would not. So it's basically just the FICA taxes and para if they choose to accept it, there's no other cost to the county as far as health insurance.
Okay.
And then your other one?
Okay, the temporary employee that I'm requesting. Back in 2014, the road department hired a gentleman for approximately six months. He went through and GPS located all the culverts and all the bridges throughout the county maintained roads. And he, it's on a beautiful spreadsheet, I've got a copy of it, Matt's got a copy of it, Josh has got a copy of it for insurance reasons. What I'm wanting to do is hire a temporary employee for approximately six months and have him start at the north end of the county, work south and then east and GPS locate and map all the roads that we maintain, so we can get an accurate count on them.
And mileage?
And, yeah, mileage.
Is it the same guy or you're?
No, this would be a different employee.
Do you know what, you would try to pay him?
Ah, we're looking at probably about $1,250 an hour.
And so, do you have the, the equipment and stuff, the, all the tech?
One of the purchases we did through ARPA was that Toughbook computer, which is also gonna be a computer when we're done with this, that Matt can use and pull information off of and that the new foreman that I've just hired will be able to use also.
No, I think it's great, I think that, you know, it, it would be, to have the, have the data in front of you to be able to know just how many roads you got, where the roads are at. And if you need to send somebody out to a road out in the middle of nowhere, you can give them the GPS location and tell them to put it in Google Maps and go to it.
Yeah, I mean, we're close, but to have an exact count would be great.
Sure. No, I, I.
Julianne, would we hire him as a 1099 or would he be a regular employee?
No, it would be an actual employee of the county.
Just for temporary, just six months?
Yep.
County gets paid on their, on the roads for the miles that they turn in, correct? And we haven't really had an accurate?
It's as accurate as we can get for what we, you know, for the technology that we've used up to now. We have, nobody's actually ever gone out and GPSed every mile that we've got. And my plan is, is like with District B, send him out with Juno, send this person out with Juno, because Juno's the district operator for this area. He knows which road to county, he knows which ones are from Tulareosa and he knows which ones are state. And then move in with the district guys and just spend the time with him. And if a district guy isn't available with Jim, like you and I had discussed, Jim knows the Mesa better than probably anybody in this room, other than maybe you.
Okay.
That's a good idea. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, have we got anything else?
We pretty much. That's it, from me, I have nothing else.
Awesome. Does anybody else have anything?
I don't think, I, I was wondering if, it's not too late to put something on the agenda for the next commission meeting, I hope not.
For Thursday?
For the 12.
Yes, it's not too late, I still haven't put it together, so.
All right. But I like a, an agenda item on the, the, here, the last meeting, whenever we gave all the county employees $5,000 and $3,500 bonus. If we can have an agenda item on there, Julianne, if you can find out where that funding comes from, if it comes from.
That's from the American, it's the American Rescue Plan funding.
Source, okay.
That's the, that's the source.
But the source, if it comes from the tax, tax base?
It's from, directly from the US Treasury.
Okay.
That's exactly where it came from.
There was that question I had and, but just put it on the agenda and we can, just to discuss and consider just as a, just as a discussion item. But I, I'd like to, I'd like to discuss that in a little bit more depth, if you can put it on there, Sylvia.
Okay.
Ready?
Oh, that's all I got.
Okay.
All right.
We're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.